And then we should be all ready to go.
As we said, Sue, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Hold on.
Okay. I'll order this planning commission meeting for April 22nd. This is a historic occasion because I believe this is the first time I've ever seen a planning commission meeting in the city of Troy, like, video conference. So that's good. Please call the roll.
Mr. Walkie.
Here.
Mayor Oda.
Here.
This is Erlich.
Here.
Mr. Titterington.
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Here.
Cappers.
Here.
Mr. McGary.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, we have our minutes of our March 25th meeting before us. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions of those minutes? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walkie, second by Mr. Westmeyer. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, they stand accepted.
I am seeing.
The first matter on the agenda is historic district application for 126 South Plum Street, installation of fencing. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir, we do. The applicants, the property owners of 126 South Plum Street, they're requesting planning commission approval for installation of a black wrought iron fence along the property line, along with replacing a privacy fence at their back patio, which is an existing wood privacy fence with a new vinyl fence. This property is Zoned R5, single-family residential, and is located on the block of South Plum Street between West Canal and West Franklin. The OHI form describes this property as being built around 1911. It's a two-story and a half-frame vernacular-designed building set in a small urban with closely spaced buildings. This home is not listed on the National Historic Registry. The applicants are amending the application. I sent out the information yesterday. So there's three items. One is installing the four-and-a-half-foot-tall, black vinyl wrought iron style fence around the property line. Remove an interior wood privacy fence that is for screening along their patio behind the home with a new white vinyl fence. And the third amended portion is the installation of black architectural asphalt shingle for the roof. Currently, what's on the home is three-tab asphalt shingle in light gray. In the packet is your site plan, maps, and the provided pictures from the applicant for the fencing. And as I mentioned, I sent out the, or Sue sent out, the photo of the proposed shingles. This application has been reviewed and meets all the compliance for the regulations in the zoning code. Staff does recommend the approval for all three items, the fence, the white vinyl screening fence, and the shingles.
Any questions to staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The only question I had was, I wasn't clear whether that wrought, the wrought iron-looking fence was going to be vinyl or aluminum. The text says vinyl, but the drawing shows aluminum. I hope it's aluminum.
It is actually the vinyl material. It has more aluminum base in the column portions, but the spans where the wrought iron section, those are more of a vinyl material.
Do you know if it's like reinforced vinyl?
It is. It's the thicker vinyl-style fence. It's not actual metal.
Other than the front yard, do we have any fence setback regulation that we're concerned about here?
Not on this property. We do have regulations for separation of fences of five feet, but on this property, they're allowed to go to the property line. There's no surrounding or existing fences on the property line. And the separation between the screening fence that they're asking for and the proposed fence on the property line, it'll meet those setbacks.
Any other questions to staff? Commission want to take any action?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, who seconded it? Mr. McGary? McGary seconded. Mr. Walkie moved. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
The next matter is historic district application for the demolition of a vacant structure to 110 East Canal Street. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. The applicants, which is the city of Troy, request a certificate of appropriateness from the planning commission along the demolition of the vacant commercial structure that is located at 110 East Canal Street. This property is Zoned B3 Central Business District. It's located on the southeast corner of East Canal and South Walnut Street. The OHI form describes this building as a four-story, commercial, industrial brick building with a vernacular design. The entrance is, again, has paneled with a transom, window openings that have brick, arch brick, lintels, and stone seals. Some of the windows have been replaced, and two sets of stairs form a front veranda. This building is not on the National Registry of Historic Places. This property was purchased by the city of Troy back in November for proposed use of the new fire station. The building has previously been used for cold storage. This building was constructed for commercial on the first and upper floors, and most recently, some residential apartments were added in the upper floor. This building is not original for the site. The existing structure was built in the early 1900s with several modern modifications, which include roll-up doors, one on the front facing East Canal, a couple in the back facing the back parking lot, along with newer concrete loading bays on the back, and a newer concrete addition in the middle between the two towers along East Canal Street. The building is in some disrepair and has been vacant since 2018 with little or no activity to improve this structure. The city's contractor, KZF Design, has provided us a document outlining the deficiencies of this building as far as trying to rehab it and keep it. As you're aware, the ordinance does require or set four standards to be given for demolition, and two of them have to be met. In reviewing standards, out of the four standards, standard number two has been met. The structure doesn't provide any architectural benefit to the surrounding area. It's not the original building, even though this building was constructed in the early 1900s. There are no features to this building that make it unique, other than the mass of the building. This building has been modified, as I explained, with newer, non-historically appropriate materials and treatments, along with the lack of maintenance to this building, has deemed it deficient for the proposed use. The third standard has been met, as it requires a square foot cost of meeting the minimum building code. Our estimated cost would exceed the price per square foot, which, after doing research, I put it, I put it 39 square feet, but KZF, in their document, we went with $40 per square foot, and that cost is far exceeded to try and bring this building up to usable and rehab for our proposed use. The third standard has been met. So that is our two standards that need to be met for demolition. We have a proposed reuse plan. That's obviously for a new site to be designed and built as a fire station, which that process is ongoing at this time. We will be bringing a, once the design has been created and approved through the staff and through KZF and the fire department, as far as the needs being met, we will bring that to historic commission for review. Staff does recommend approval for the demolition of the building and for this reuse plan. That's based on the property meets the criteria listed for demolition standards. We have unusual and compelling circumstances, as outlined in the staff report. This property is not on the National Historic Register. The proposed demolition will not negatively impact historic or architectural significance or the integrity of this block. The property has little or no significant historical or architectural value in itself, and we have a reuse plan.
I'll start out with questioning, if you would please. We have four standards, and these standards are going to be becoming very, very important whenever we have a demolition in the historic district. So I want to make sure that we're all getting ourselves familiar with these. We've got the four standards, and you say they, this application meets standards two and three, so therefore, we don't need to look any further. However, if we did look further, it says, "In addition to meeting two of the four criteria stated above, the ordinance section 1143-2212 gives criteria for unusual and compelling circumstances which the application believes they meet based on these things." Is 2212, is that, can that be used if the, if two of the criteria are not met? In other words, if one of the four are met, but we have these other compelling and unusual circumstances, can we rely on those instead?
Yes. Yes, sir. Those can be used because those four standards, as they're laid out in the section above, are fairly rigid as far as the building official, public nuisances, and the architectural features, as outlined in the four previous criteria.
Mr. Chair, it's, as you read, it says, "In addition to meeting two of the four criteria." So those would just be additional reasons on top of meeting two of the four.
So the answer to my question is, is no. I mean, we have to meet the two of the four criteria, and we can't move forward.
That is correct, yeah.
That's the way we.
The blame has to meet, has to meet through the four, and then in addition to those requirements, you can have the compelling arguments if so needed.
Right.
Okay. So why do we have 2212 if they're, is there somewhere in those four standards where unusual compelling circumstances are listed? Because I don't know if we have, if we have to use two of the four, 2212 seems to be something that, that's, we don't need.
Well, just because they meet two of the four, that's the minimum standard. The planning commission can still say, well, yeah, you meet two of the four, but we still don't want you to demolish. And so when 2212 then gives additional reasons why, even though it's, even though it's meeting the minimum, there are other indirect reasons, if you will, that demolition makes sense.
Good. So we're back at making sure that two of the four criteria are met. The only criteria that I had the trouble with, the two that you mentioned, was number two. Structure's listed as nonqualifying or is not consistent with those other structures. Could you go over that with, with me once again, as to why you believe that it's not consistent with other structures in the historic district?
Passing.
Because it seems to be of a historic character. You know, if somebody wanted to come in and rehab that building into a nice restaurant or whatever, they could do that. I mean, spaghetti warehouse or something like that. But talk to me about that again.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not that we're saying that the building isn't historic itself. We're just saying that because of the surrounding area that it's in currently, this portion of the district, there's residential on two sides, commercial on one side. It, given the size and mass of the building as well, and that it takes up, you know, it's on its own block, there's really nothing around it that really matches it, other than one corner. And that's because they're, they're both square-style buildings with, with windows in them. They don't really have any architectural features that make it unique or blend into the area with the residential structures or the churches on the other corners, where if you were to take another property like the Troy Hayner, that, that property has very unique features. The architectural style of it is unique and is very prominent. There's other houses that take some of those notes or same features that the Hayner House has and incorporated it into their own design, where this one is, it's a four-story brick building. And just because it's, has arched, arched window openings and stone lintels, that's really the, the only features it has. There's nothing else really to it that, that makes it unique in its character.
And taking a look at the standard, though, says, in district, in terms of historic character, I guess I'm having a problem with, this is an old Troy sunshade building in the early 1900s, late 1800s. Some people by themselves would say that that itself indicates that it's a historic structure. I'm having a little bit of a problem with that. But let me defer to anybody else that has any questions or comments. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
My only comment would be that, in the time that I've been in Troy, the building has not been utilized in any, obviously, any historical nature. It has, it continues to deteriorate, I guess. So I would, I would, I would welcome a, you know, a new, better use for that corner.
And I agree with you. I think the fire station would be a good, better use for that corner. But your comment, Jim, concerning the deterioration of the building, that's going to come back to us again, I'm sure. And would a person who has a piece of property they want to demolish, would they be better off just letting it be, start deteriorating so that that becomes a qualification for us permitting the demolition?
Well, we do have provisions in our code that you can't do demo by neglect. And I think what Robert's trying to say, that it's been, it's basically been altered over the years, and so what little value it has architecturally isn't significant as it would have been if it was maybe intact the way it was originally built. I think that loses value. And so when we read that section, we're saying, how much value is left over? And it doesn't seem to be a whole lot when you look at everything. He did talk about the windows outside of that. I think they, they've redone the front of it from the original building itself. And so those, those small repairs kind of strip it of its significance, in staff's opinion.
And so, Al, to your, to your question about deterioration, though, there's a specific provision in that, in the code that says, "You cannot allow it to deteriorate and then use that as an excuse to demolish." In our case, we bought the building in that condition. We've had it a very relatively short time, so there hasn't been any deterioration since we've owned it. It was already in that state when we bought it.
I should, I can probably qualify my comment about deterioration. I guess more so than the deterioration is the fact that there's been repairs done to it. There's been modifications done to it. This, meaning this historical nature has been deteriorated, not necessarily destructural. It probably, if you leave it alone, it'd probably stand for another hundred years. And so, but I think the historical nature has been deteriorated just from the use of the building and misuse.
Mr. Chairman, I question whether the building is historical in nature strictly because of its usage. If the structure itself has no historical significance, is it still historical building because it was part of Troy's history as a sunshade factory? Question?
I will, I will say, in my research, I pulled up the old Sanborn maps, and the original Troy sunshade building that was on this corner was only one story. The multiple stories and the second tower, if you will, that's kind of in the middle of the block, those were added on a couple of years later as the business grew. But it, again, this isn't really the original building that was there. In fact, before this, it was a grain warehouse when the canal was still there. So there was a building there prior, and then this one came in and was built up over about four years to what it is now. And to speak to Mr. McGary's point, the, there's new, you know, concrete block that connects the two buildings. There's vinyl siding on this building in between those two sections. There's metal roll-up doors that are not historically appropriate either. So that goes back to what Tim was saying as well, that there's been so many modifications to it, it's not what it used to be either.
Okay, any other question? Good.
I would add, the group that the city bought it from had it for a couple of years with the intent of remodeling it into apartments and that sort of thing, and that that just became an overwhelmingly expensive venture, and they decided they could not do that. So there were plans to rehab it, not financially feasible, and so it was going to continue to sit as is.
Okay. Before we take on a motion of any sort here, let's talk about practicalities here. The applicant has, happens to be the city of Troy. Do we have Mayor Patrick, the two of you in your position as officers of the city of Troy, are you able to vote on this thing?
I, you know, if it was, I did not ask Grant that question. I would probably abstain myself. I'm the one who signed the application, so I probably should not vote on it. And I was planning on abstaining. I don't know if that, that carries forward to Mayor Oda, since he's not a signature by local ordinance to these applications. That falls to me. So at a minimum, I think I would abstain.
Robin, what's your position?
I don't vote. I will go with whatever you guys decide. I don't vote when it goes to council. I'm not a voting member of city council that will make any decisions financially on it.
Well, this issue won't come before city council, I don't believe, will it? We make the decision on this matter.
Just on this matter, yes. But when we talk about the construction and the bidding and the action, that'll all go to the council.
Okay. Let's, let's put it, I don't know that there's any problem with the issue.
But I certainly could abstain.
That's, I feel more comfortable with you doing that.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Any other issues? Any other discussion? Does anybody that's not Robin or Patrick want to make a motion, one way or the other?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and approval to permit the demolition of the vacant structure. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
This is Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Same.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Oh, I abstain.
Okay. Motion passed.
The next matter to come before the commission is a historic district application for 2 East Main Street for the installation of outdoor seating. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. The applicant, which is Mike Twist of MT Studios, for the property owner, Connor Heron in Heron's Market, they're proposing the installation of outdoor seating for the property at 2 East Main Street. The property is Zoned B3 Central Business District and is located on the southeast corner of Public Square. OHI form describes the building as a two-story, brick-and-stone, commercial building incorporating neoclassical elements. This, the entrance to the original bank that was there, used to be on the north side facing East Main during a later renovation. That was altered and replaced with display windows. The new entrance was installed along the Public Square side with a canopy. This building is listed on the National Reg, isn't listed on the National Register for Historic Places. The proposal is, the applicant is requesting to install a black metal awning that covers the building out to the extent of the seating area, installing a black fence to create an outdoor seating area for the patrons of Heron's Market, and installing matching black tables, chairs, and planter boxes. There is a proposed site plan in your packet. This application has been reviewed for compliance. Staff, excuse me, staff actually does not recommend the approval of the metal awning. And we're citing the Secretary of Interior Preservation briefs 11 and 44, as mentioned in your packet. The material in the flat awning is a period-type piece. Those were brought out in the 1950s and used through the 80s. It's, they're not exactly historically relevant to the, to the area. Others have been requested to be removed. One of those has, is across the street at the Cass Building that Troy Community Works is working on currently. Staff does actually recommend the approval for the fence, the tables and chairs that are there in the planter boxes. And with that, the applicant, in talking with them about the negative recommendation, we sent out a option B, we're calling it. It was a fabric awning. We sent out a rendering that was provided to us in the first original proposal of the building to show what a flat awning would look like. It is a little bit different than what's being proposed, but at least gives you some, some look and feel of what that building will look like with a flat awning. We did provide you a new architectural drawing showing the fabric awning. It will not extend out as far as the fence, but it will be a metal frame with a fabric covering. And there is a picture provided showing you what the fabric awning would also look like. So if planning commission does not like the metal awning, there is that second option that you can vote on. And staff does recommend the approval of that fabric awning. Yep, option.
Let me ask the chicken or egg question. Number one, is this in the street right-of-way?
It's not in the street right-of-way. It's in the public right-of-way, though. Yes, it extends over this, into the city's right-of-way.
Okay, to follow that up, then, with the chicken and egg question, is that, as in La Piazza, we had to have La Piazza enter into an agreement with the city of Troy on the use of the public right-of-way, and they entered into a lease agreement, if I recall correctly. Has that been mentioned here? What's the status of that?
So earlier this year, pre-Rona, the, the council amended the ordinance regarding outdoor.
Use.
Yes, use of the sidewalk, I guess is what it's called, was titled, to make that an administrative function based on the criteria that they've had in place, so that these matters, so we don't get into the chicken and egg issue that you're talking about, where we don't know which one we do first. So we've talked to the applicants. We've got several of these that, over time, we may see as a planning commission. But once that happens, then administratively, we will work out the details on what they have to do, what kind of paperwork they have to supply, et cetera.
Okay, good. Okay. Any other questions to staff?
I recall that the fabric awning is angular. In other words, it's not flat.
Correct. Correct. The fabric will be in angular style, and the metal, the, the original proposal was a flat metal one, a flat metal roof.
Okay. And this request is only for the seating area that I see in this area right here, right?
Correct. And.
Because in the rendering that we have, have seating on north, the north side of the building, and also a little bit of seating in this area.
That's casual. Yeah, that is, that only goes.
That's not before us, is it?
Correct.
That does not need to come before the planning commission, no. That's just casual seating outside, and that's part of that administrative change that council made.
Now, with those black awnings that are shown in that rendering, over the casual seating, would those be part of this whole project, or are those already installed? I can't remember.
No, sir. There, there are no awnings currently on the building, and the only awning in question is the one for the seating area.
Okay, so this, this rendering, then, is not, not based on the proposed awnings over the other buildings on the north side, and the other two on the west, right?
Correct. The one, the rendering was an original mock-up when. Correct. The one, the rendering was an original mock-up when Connor Heron first bought the building was talking about signage and everything else. They just sent that over to us to give you a reference to what a flat awning would look like.
Okay.
Where that's actually pictured on that rendering.
The other awnings look nice.
Yeah, they do.
But they're not before us today.
Correct.
Any other questions? Any other questions of staff?
I have a question now. Robert, you said that the awning would not cover all of the seating?
Correct. The, the fabric, the option B, the fabric awning will only come, come out to about halfway of the proposed fence seating area.
Well, if I'm sitting there, I'm going to want to be under the awning, especially if it starts raining. Why would it not come out over the seating?
Part of that is structural and part of that is because if, if they were to go out further, the slope would also have to go up. And then it would run into those second four windows. So for placement of the actual awning and, and for the use of the building, it can only extend out, but so far.
So it would be your preference if you wanted to be under or, yeah, you'd want to be under the awning, but some people might want to be in the open air.
And he, and he could come in with, through the administrative side of it, he could come in with some umbrellas for the other tables. That is an option for the owner.
So the, the difference between like the Caroline or like old La Piazza was their buildings were structured a little bit better where they could cover their whole patio area. In this case, it structurally works better for what you're saying.
Correct. With the pylons on this building and the inset windows where La Piazza and the Caroline have flat, flat sides.
Okay.
And the Caroline and La Piazza have fenced in areas because that was how their liquor license got approved for serving liquor out on those, that area. But Heron isn't intending to serve liquor, is they?
Yes. Yeah, they got approved for that. Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right. So administratively, when we're talking about the other seating that we see here in the rendering, you're going to have to make sure that no liquor goes outside that.
Correct. Correct.
All right. Any other questions?
May I ask how they can be temporary in nature if there's a railing going up? Or you're just saying down the road if they ever want it, it'll be pulled up and the concrete will be repaired or what?
Yeah. So we, we think it or term it as temporary in nature because you can, you can easily remove it without damaging the building. It's not actually attaching to the building without a, you know, a couple of screws or some tap cons or whatever. So it's temporary in, in that nature. It would be hard to get that down, much like Caroline with their renovation.
Thank you.
Okay. If somebody wants to make a motion and if it's a motion to approve, it's either option A or B. A is the metal roof. B is the awning with the material with a metal structure frame, right? Bob?
Yes, sir.
Anybody want to take any action?
I'd recommend approval of the fabric awning. Option two.
I'll second.
Mr. Westendorf, second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich.
Yes.
Motion is approved based on option two.
The next matter on the agenda is rezoning application. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. The applicant Phil Ray has requested the planning commission to consider allowing rezoning the property of 430 Kirk Lane. That's parcel D08057920. It's point six one of an acre. The property is currently zoned R4, single-family residential, and the applicant is requesting that the zoning of the parcel be rezoned to OC1, which is office commercial district. The land consists of 26,572 square feet and is currently developed with a 4,700 square foot building. It was previously used as a commercial daycare facility. You may know it as the Kinder Care Building. That helps with the placement. The surrounding zonings are B2, general commercial district to the north and west, and R4, single-family residential to the northeast and east. The applicant has cited the reasons for, for rezoning the property is to be able to use this space for an event venue and for meetings and for meeting space in, in general, which is a permitted use in the OC1 zoning district. The current building was designed and constructed meeting the commercial codes for occupancy as a commercial daycare facility. The zoning code describes the R4 zoning district as designated to provide and accommodate single-family dwellings on lots with areas at least of at least 9,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The district is mapped to protect areas that now meet these minimum lot sizes and for comparable areas which will develop in the future. Zoning code describes the proposed OC1 zoning district as designed to accommodate a mixture of office and commercial uses consisting of groups, groupings of professional research, executive, administrative, clerical, stenography, stenographic and similar uses. Residential development is not permitted in this district and this district is intended to act as a buffer. The district is mapped along major thoroughfares near hospitals in a transitional area between non-residential and non-residential uses. In your packet, I've attached a map showing those surrounding zoning districts and within the 250-foot radius of the land that is proposed. For the city of Troy comprehensive plan, the economic development goal number eight is for Troy to reestablish local ownership in our business districts and continue to allow us to promote ongoing programs supported by the development department. This ownership, new owner purchased the property from auction. He is a local business owner currently at the neighboring property that is at the corner of North Market and Kirk Lane with his auto repair business. Due to the straightforward nature of this rezoning request, the city of Detroit comprehensive plan and the fact that the city council is required to hold a public hearing, staff does not recommend a public hearing for this application at this time. It is our opinion that this proposed zoning, rezoning is consistent with the desired goals of the comprehensive plan and the design of the property. It provides a buffer from the general commercial district along North Market and the residential neighborhood that abuts this property. And the proposed use of this property is a low, low intense commercial use as it is appropriate. Staff does recommend planning commission to approve the rezoning request from R4, single-family to OC1, office commercial district.
Any questions of staff? First issue to come before the commission then is the whether or not to hold a public hearing on this matter. Does the commission want to take any action on that?
How moving not make, have a public hearing?
There's support for Mr. Walkie's motion. I'm sorry, who? Mrs. Erlich, second in motion. Any further discussion on that issue? Please call the roll.
Mr. Westmeyer.
A yes vote means that you were not holding a public meeting.
You're muted, Ed.
Sorry, got a family around. Yes.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Commission will not hold a hearing.
Next matter is to whether or not you want to make a recommendation to city council, one way or the other concerning the rezoning. If you want to take any action.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to recommend to council, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there's support for that motion?
Support.
Mrs. Erlich, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Walkie.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich.
Yes.
Mr. Titterington.
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer. Mr. Westmeyer.
You're muted.
Muted.
Mr. Westmeyer.
Yes.
You got the thumbs up.
Motion is, motion is approved.
Thank you. Does staff have any other matters to come from the commission today?
No, we don't. We just wanted to say thank you to the planning commission members for having this online and allowing the developments to go through and carry on. So we appreciate the willingness to, to participate.
I actually think it's a good way to facilitate this. So, commission members have anything else they want to address? Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Favor signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We stand adjourned. Thank you for your non-attendance.
Before everybody, this is Jill Rhodes. I just wanted to let you know something to learn about Zoom is if you guys are muted during the meeting and you want to unmute, there is a setting down by your mute button that you can actually hold your, you have to push the set, you have to re, you have to set the setting, but you could push your space bar and unmute temporarily just to like vote or something like that. That's something that we learned just the other week and thought I would share because I, we don't have much experience with Zoom, so not sure what everybody else's experience with Zoom is. So that's your little tidbit.
Thank you. Who's Julian Rhodes? Okay. Everybody have a good day. Thank you.